Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna disappear for a second.
Oh, come on.
Hello, can anybody hear me out there?
I can hear you.
Good, okay. But I'm gonna just say this upfront, we'll probably say it a few more times. If you want to speak at the public hearing today, put your name in the chat box. And you'll be asked to give your name and address when it's your turn to speak. We'll do them in the order that people appear in the chat box. If some were there before I logged on, I hope someone will let me know. The talk is not to be used for conversation. And I'm not sure how we'll enforce that, but we'll just tell you over and over again to stop. I don't know if there's a way to kick people off chat. We're gonna time these people's remarks and we'll enforce the three-minute limit. I'm afraid I'm gonna be rude about that because I think there are gonna be a lot of people who want to speak and I want to get everybody have their turn. That said, I'm gonna just read what the minutes say.
Counselor Elmore?
Yes?
Is the meeting being recorded or will it be recorded?
It will be recorded to the best of my ability. I'll hit the record button now.
Thank you.
And I'll send a warning out that it's being recorded. We'll do that later.
Okay, I also sent you an email with some questions.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do this in order, we'll put their names in the chat box and we'll do them in the order people ask. So if you have questions, that's the time to ask them. Unfortunately, we won't be able to answer them on the fly. The way this awkward process works is people speak for three minutes each, but we don't respond.
Thank you, Counselor Elmore.
I'm gonna ask everybody to put their mute button on unless they're speaking or have been called on or if they're, unless they're a member of these two committees.
So this guy I taught.
Excuse me.
I see.
Excuse me, who's speaking? We can hear you. Please, please put yourself on mute.
Hello? Come here.
Who's that speaking? Please, please put your computers on mute. I'm hearing someone doing the dishes. There're gonna be a lot of people on this meeting.
Carl? Here. See Carl?
I don't know Carl. Who's Carl?
Somebody's not cute. Okay.
I'm gonna mute everybody just to start. Okay, everybody's on mute except me. And if you're either the planning board or the EDC, Economic Development Committee, take yourself off mute because we're gonna have to do a roll call. Three minutes to touchdown or blast off. Charles, are you there?
I am here.
You're gonna run the timer and let me know when, announce when three minutes are up?
Yeah, I'll give.
And? What else was I gonna ask you? Counselor Disorder, are you there? Counselor Disorder?
Well, hi there.
Hi, thank you. Could I, could you do me a favor and manage the chat line?
Absolutely.
Let me know who's first, who's next, and enforce the no, no discussion in the chat box.
Okay, I'll do that. Hold on one second, I'm gonna get another thing.
Before we start, the first person I see in the chat box is David Shurm. Is there anybody else ahead of him? Okay, just let me know if I've missed anybody.
Charles, just wanted to suggest you relabel your chat box.
I'm not sure how I do that.
And I am not seeing anybody's name in the chat.
George, you talking about the chat box or the, or his box on the screen?
Thanks, well, I was talking about his box on the screen, so it gives his name and role.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that. There's no, I have found no way to edit the, my name box.
All right, how do you appear?
Recognize it's the town of Greenfield because of the planning board.
You're in his town of Greenfield, of city of Greenfield? Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a, this meeting is being recorded by the Economic Development Committee. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time and take yourself off chat if you want to do that. Off mute. Hearing none. Just say that this is a joint meeting of the, joint public hearing of the Economic Development Committee, the city of Greenfield and the, and the planning board. I'm gonna call one side of the meeting to order and then Charles would call the other. I mean, do the roll call rather. Pardon me, I'm new at this. So do the roll call for the EDC. Counselor Elmore, that's me. I'm, oh, let me just say that we started this meeting at six o'clock. I'm Counselor Elmore and I'm present. Counselor Bullock, are you here? I'm back to Counselor Bullock. Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
And Counselor Mayo, I know he was having technical problems. Counselor Mayo, are you here yet? When you arrive, let me know because I think we need you for a quorum. Is the mayor here by any chance?
Mary Byrne?
No, the mayor of Greenfield. I don't see her. She can fill in sometimes to fill in.
Counselor Elmore, if I may?
Yes, yes.
One, two, we have three, which is fine.
We have three, so we have a quorum. Okay. Chuck, you wanna take your side?
Sure. Charles Roberts for the regional planning board. I'm going to be taking the, the planning board side of this meeting.
Here.
Mark Maloney?
Here.
Emily Ash?
Here.
David Chichester? Amy McMahon, alternate? Okay, we have the five of us here.
There are no minutes to approve, so we're gonna go right into the public hearing for, on a proposed zoning amendment for marijuana cultivation facilities established in medium, which means outdoors, I believe, in, to high-density neighborhoods and a moratorium on all special permits. There's a motion that was submitted, proposed zoning amendment for marijuana cultivation facilities established in medium to high-density neighborhoods and moratorium on all special permits. Before I open the meeting, open the public hearing, I'd like to make a few remarks about where we are, where we stand in the legal process and where I stand in regard to this project. I wanted to let both sides know that I've moved a bit. As some of you may have heard, my first reaction to a letter from a constituent concerned about cannabis cultivation on Country Club Road was supportive of the growers. I said that as far as I was concerned, marijuana was a cash crop like corn or potatoes. That Greenfield is an agricultural community. And the feeling was that marijuana is gonna be grown in Massachusetts and it'll be revenue generated and I want a Greenfield to get its share. I also thought I caught a whiff of anti-weed sentiment in the letters, some of the letters I received. And I wondered if the neighbors would have complained so loudly if there were hops or tobacco being grown across the road. But as I say, I've come around. I've heard the concerns of the neighbors and I believe they are legitimate. I think setbacks from property lines are not unreasonable. I've heard such widely different estimates of how much revenue can be generated by one of these fields from 1 million to 20 million that the economic impact on the town really warrants further study. I came around to think that a moratorium was probably a good idea. But what may have tipped the balance for me even more than the concerns of the residents was the behavior of the would-be growers. The lawyer representing them told me in a phone conversation earlier on in this process that they wanted to be good neighbors. Well, that's not what I've seen. At every turn, the growers seem to have pushed their efforts right to the edge of the law. The town approved 11 facilities, that's 100,000 square feet, because farmers told us that they couldn't make enough money with a tier-one facility. But what's been proposed on Country Club Road is, as Counselor Disorder pointed out, effectively a tier 33. Three plots of 100,000 square feet each, submitted by three friends who share a lawyer, a business address, and a corporation start date. It's hard to see that as anything but a maneuver to get around the limits of tier 11 cultivation. The latest twist, and this really took us all for a loop, is that a week after notice of this public hearing was published in the recorder, an agent representing the growers, might as well say it was Bill Martin, the former mayor, filed a so-called approval-not-required form that would protect this land from any zoning changes for three years, by which time it would effectively be grandfathered in. By mass general law, the planning board had no choice but to approve the A and R last week, May 5. And that's, that's what they did. And now, according to the city of Greenfield's legal counsel, whose opinion I requested, the city council at this point has no legal power to override it. And this is what he wrote, I'll read it to you. The petition, the issue is, what if we just approved exactly what the petitioners asked for tonight? Override the A and R because the, the, the public hearing was announced before the A and R was filed? And this is what he said. "Petition raises broad concerns about aspects of the existing city cannabis ordinances and asks the city council to draft and adopt new ordinances to address these concerns. The lack of a specific proposed ordinance in the petition renders it ineligible for treatment as a petition under either the zoning act or the relevant portions of the charter." Bottom line, although you, the petitioners had a head start because they asked for the public hearing before the A and R was filed, the growers have been able to do an end run because the petition wasn't in the right form. It sucks, but there it is. The law says we can hear you today, but we can't help you, not today. The lawyer went on to say that notwithstanding the lack of a specific proposal in the petition, there's no reason that the city council and/or planning board cannot consider the concerns raised therein, review the existing cannabis ordinances, and propose amendments that may resolve any legitimate concerns that may exist. That process has been started and I suspect that, given the force of public opinion, that Greenfield may impose a moratorium on future growth and eventually may adopt new rules governing future outdoor cultivation. What we're trying to come up with is rules for the entire town, not for this particular. Now, the growers say they want to be good neighbors and good neighbors, I think, might voluntarily adopt any moratoriums or setbacks that the town comes up with. That's their choice. At this point, that would be voluntary. But I have to warn the growers that if they don't honor the will of the council, if they go plow right ahead on these three tier 11 fields, they will have made enemies of Greenfield residents who are as angry as I've ever seen in this town and seem determined to do everything in their power to stop the project from going forward. Their next opportunity will be on the zoning, at the Zoning Board of Appeals. The date for that meeting hasn't been set. That's what I wanted to get off my chest. Charles, did you have anything you wanted to add before we get started? Charles? He seems to be muted. Well, let's just get right into the, the public hearing. Ginny, you wanna tell me who's first?
Please, I just wanted to make two comments. Both Counselor Bullock and Counselor Mayo joined the meeting at 6:03 PM. And I would like to just caution everybody not to put their comments into the chat. You may, you'll have a turn to speak publicly, but don't write in the chat because it's a violation of open meeting law. And lastly, I do want to point out, you did a great job, Counselor Elmore. We did get the city's legal opinion. I do want to add that city council, as of right now, does not have their, their own independent legal council. That will be coming soon, but we were not having an opportunity otherwise. Thank you. And I don't see anybody's name in the chat yet.
Oh, I see, I see people. I see David Shurm. Why don't we start with him? And Chuck, are you there with the timer?
Yeah, I am. Phil, I, I was, when you asked if I had anything I wanted to share, I was on mute.
Did you have anything you wanted to share?
Well, I did want to say that, that there's nothing specific on the planning board agenda as of this moment, but, but I think we'll be taking up, you know, in the next couple of meetings, we'll, we'll look at language around moratoriums and also based on what we hear this evening, maybe language towards, you know, re-crafting an ordinance about the, the, you know, setbacks and regulations around the outdoor cultivation. So just letting folks know.
Okay, David Shurm, you're, please identify yourself and give us your address.
My name is David Shurm, 375 Barton Road, Greenfield. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. "I'm a disabled war veteran opposed to the proposed marijuana plantation on Country Club Road. A meeting of this importance to hundreds of people should be held in public and not by web. I oppose this proposal based upon the following points that you should, you should consider, although it may be too late to do anything. Water usage. The water usage of this plantation is enormous and might easily impact the city's water supply. Each plant of the 9,000 proposed plants requires six gallons of water per day over the 150-day growth season. That equals 54,000 gallons per day. That's over 8 million gallons per season and will require 3% to 5% or more of the city's average daily water supply. With climate change uncertainties, this project will create a permanent danger to our water supply. There have been five droughts varying severity since 2015, including one of extreme severity. Irrigating from the adjacent creek is not an option due to environmental concerns such as aquatic life threats, which the state has yet to study. At the least, this proposal should require a state environmental impact statement on feasibility. Two, air quality. The odors associated with the cultivation and processing of marijuana create an unlivable quality of life and affect the peaceful enjoyment of their homes for residents of the adjacent properties. The odor is described as a combination of skunk and sulfur. This odor travels distances of 1,500 feet or five football fields. This will affect most of the 125 homes between the river and underpass and Barton Road. It's also inconceivable depending on wind patterns that could reach areas of the country club. I lived through a war where odors are one of the lingering memories that I would not wish the permanent impact of noxious odors on anyone. Three, the right to peaceful enjoyment of property and home values. There is an average 10% decline of home values associated with marijuana cultivation near housing where there are few or no homes directly adjacent to grow fields. The proposed fields directly adjacent to housing will severely impact their value. In addition, this current proposal would in effect erect a prison-like encampment complete with very large metal processing buildings and grow installations surrounded by cyclone fences topped with concertina wire, bright night lighting, alarm sirens, and armed guards. Imagine that next to your home. One has to question whether the proponents of this proposal would advocate locating the site in an area where the affected houses were McMansions. This board has to make a judgment as to whether or not to devalue the well-kept modest homes and exploit those residents to benefit a few people, to reap profit at the expense of these homeowners. This is not only a land use issue, it's an economic class that the board needs to consider."
Give a few more seconds.
I think this is a travesty. Whoever let this go on before the people had a chance to speak on this should be, should resign, be fired, or be voted out of office.
Thank you, David. Can I just say before we move to the next speaker? If, if what you wanted to say has been said before, try not to say it again. We've got a lot over tonight. We don't have to hear the same thing over and over again. Thank you, David, for starting us off. Now, I have Paul, Kim, and Holly Babino, Bob Dino would all like to speak. I think, I think they're gonna have to choose. Which of you wants to speak?
We all have very different points of view that we'd like to share.
Let me just stop for a second. Yes, Counselor Disorder, point of order.
Point of order. I don't wish to overcall you in any way, but I do think that every, it is my understanding and I'll defer to the group that every individual would have their three minutes to speak.
Okay.
That is, to the best of my knowledge, sorry to overcall.
I think that, that sounds fair. That sounds fair. Who wants to go first?
My name is Paul Babino. I'll go first.
Okay.
So my name is Paul Babino. I live on Country Club Road. As part of drawing up this petition, my family and I took a look at the zoning bylaws that other local communities have in place. One commonality we saw was that most of had very specific setback restrictions in their bylaws for not only schools, but also for residential properties and homes. We found out that Pittsfield, for instance, started with a 300-foot setback for any outdoor marijuana grows from any residential property, but then later increased that setback to 500 feet. Turns out that still wasn't enough and they further amended the bylaws to completely ban outdoor marijuana cultivation in residential areas of the city. We found out that this was done because of the many nuisances that the outdoor grows caused for the citizens in the area. Not only was the odor intolerable, but they found the visual impact of the lighting and the noise to be too overwhelming as well. Hatfield and Goshen both also have 500-foot setbacks from any residential properties and Amherst and Adley both have 300-foot setbacks. Will they be next to follow Pittsfield? Or will they add a restriction to tier sizing? Such as the, for the example for the marijuana crops canopy size allowed for marijuana grows like Covington and Sandisfield have. This isn't just happening in our local communities in Massachusetts, though. It's happening all across the country. It can be seen in cities like Denver, Colorado, where they've instituted a 1,000-foot setback from the nearest legal residential parcel line. I'm sure there are many more like this if you take the time to delve into the enjoyable reading of the city's zoning bylaws. These restrictions have been added to zoning bylaws of many towns and cities for many reasons. I think it's only right that you decide to protect Greenfield citizens and our neighbors here in Greenfield by taking the time needed to do proper research and put safety nets in place for all of us. Please move forward with the petition. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Paul. Kim or Holly, who wants to go next?
My name is Kim Babino. I live on Country Club Road in Greenfield. I would like to take the opportunity tonight to address one reason why I believe a moratorium on issuing special permits for marijuana cultivation is required and in the best interest of our city, citizens, environment, and local resources. When the community outreach meetings took place for the proposed marijuana grow on Country Club Road, I didn't know there was a plan for a tier 11 marijuana grow on Lyden Road. This field is directly behind the one on Country Club Road. It was only after these meetings that I started the many hours of research on this subject. During my research, I learned about the huge amount of water cannabis plants require. While all the plants that have been grown in this field in the past have been local or native plants which never required irrigation, I quickly found out that according to the Cannabis Control Commission, among others, that cannabis requires irrigation at a rate of six gallons of water per plant per day. I was astounded. Upon inspection of the plan submitted for special permitting of the Lyden Road cultivation, I found that it stated that during peak cultivation, their 100,000-square-foot canopy would require 2,300 gallons of water per day. I decided to do the math based on the CCC's six gallon per plant per day figure and the math works out to this only covering 383 plants. For their growing area, this would equate to each plant taking up 261 square feet of space. That's one space-intensive plant. No, in all reality, the plan is simply a way, is simply way understating the water usage. If we are generous in saying that a single plant requires four square feet of growing space, this would mean 25,000 plants at this site. If each consumed the six gallons per day, this puts their water usage at more like 150,000 gallons per day. Quite a different figure from what was stated in the plan. How is this overlooked? What's wrong? This is exactly why we need to take a moratorium. We need to be sure we're completely understanding the true usage of vital resources. Not only the resources used by a single farm, but the cumulative use. For instance, these two farms will draw water off of the same aquifer. If we consider the total area of the two grows, this is 400,000 square feet, using a range of a plant every two to four square feet, the math works out to between 600,000 to over 1 million gallons of water per day. What will this do to our aquifer? We need to find out and we need to put controls in place to measure usage at the Lyden Road farm. This aquifer is a precious resource that keeps our brooks and streams flowing and our vernal pools pooling. Our wetlands are vital and play important roles to our local biomes and wildlife. Did you know there's a rare wildlife habitat in the area of McCard Brook and Millbrook? McCard Brook runs between the two farms. I found this while looking at mass GIS maps. It was presented in the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Atlas and is based on occurrences of rare wetland wildlife observed within the last 25 years. These issues need to be looked into and they take time. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Kim. Holly, you're up. State your name and address, please.
My name is Holly Babino. I live on Country Club Road. I have a civics class at the end of the day. We learn about how government works, what happened to make this country, and how we are able to keep everything as fair as possible. The subject we are learning about right now is Massachusetts. My teacher wanted us to pick a problem in Greenfield to do more research about. And by anonymous vote, we picked underage substance abuse. We all talked about how it's gotten worse and worse. Most of my class was concerned, saying that these cultivation facilities will make things even worse. We are giving people the ability to get more and more of these drugs. And even though we only legalized it to adults, children are getting... and even though we only legalized it to adults, children are getting these and getting addicted to them. Our school always tells us, tells us not to do drugs, and now we're putting in a big marijuana facility right in the middle of a neighborhood where so many families live. My family always taught me to talk about my concerns that I have at dinner. The only subject that has been brought up multiple times lately was this huge marijuana facility getting put right in my front yard. The yard that I play in, the yard that I swim in, and the yard that overlooks a field, a field that I have seen almost every day of my life. Please consider our proposal for zoning protections that will, that were removed from our previous bylaws in two thousand twenty-one and replaced by the current ones that allow these huge grows in our neighborhoods without consideration for any of our families and neighbors. Thank you so much for hearing me voice my concerns.
Thank you, Holly. Al Norman, he's put his address, twenty-one Grinnell Street, you're on.
Point of order, Councilor Elmer, when you asked me to monitor this, I would like to say I have a running list, and I also see people with their hands up, but some of the names that you're calling, I am not seeing. So I just want you to be aware of that. I keep checking. So between the two of us, I think we'll get to everyone, but I just want to make sure there's no confusion in that.
Let's see if we can clear that up. Who do you have first on your list?
I have, this is my list. I have Mike Corona, Sandy Kosterman, Fred MacGyver, Nancy MacGyver, Carissa Clifford, Norm Morris, Garth Shaney felt right, wrote in that he would like to speak, Lisa Appleton, Barbara Morris, Brian Hoffman, and I see a Johnston with their hand up. So this is a different way of meeting for all of us, so I just want to make sure that folks know that we're gonna do our best to get to everyone.
Okay, yeah, it seemed like I had some names that got up there before you started catching them. Tell me who you have first again?
Mike Corona is my first.
Okay, hold on. I have Mike Corona entering his name at six eleven, and the people I'm reading from were in before then. So, but when we get to Mike Corona, I think we'll have been, we'll have coordinated. And if anybody doesn't get, if we don't get to anybody, we'll give you a chance to re-enter your name. Thank you, Councilor Disorder, for keeping me more or less honest. Okay, Al Norman, twenty-one Grinnell Street, you're on. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Scale is incredibly important in a small community. I can't imagine sitting silent while three developers try to create a mega marijuana project that spans nearly seven acres of cultivation, three hundred thousand square feet of canopy, the size of five football fields. In two thousand and eighteen, a cultivation in Greenfield, an outdoor cultivation, was limited to five thousand square feet. But last year, the city opened it up to cultivations as large as three hundred thousand square feet in a residential area, because in all other areas, it's only indoor, and other zones, it's always indoor. The city has also entered into host agreements with the developer before the citizens were even informed of this development proposal, which has not been filed with the state. The city, the city has weak odor control requirements and nuisance protections for outdoor cultivations. Our setback requirements, as you've heard, are inadequate in light of the new supersized proposals which are being sought. The, the moratorium will give us a chance to catch our breath, and we need to impose control limitations on development. This is like a groundhog day for me. These out-of-state developers keep coming in and trying to squeeze through the largest projects they can get away with to maximize their profits. But the biggest projects are the ones that are the most inconsistent with neighborhood character and small-town quality of life. These developers want to blow the doors off, but we have the right and the obligation to tell them, turn the volume down on your project and be a good neighbor that you say you want to be. Whether we file for a moratorium or not, there is nothing preventing the city council from drafting an updated ordinance with more control limits for large projects. We need to allow only indoor cultivation, only indoor cultivation in the rural residential zone, and restore the canopy limit of tier one. We need to limit the number of outdoor cultivation licenses in Greenfield to four, which means we could have a total of twelve tier one sites or sixty thousand square feet across the city. Allow only one license per property address. Create a five hundred foot canopy setback for all homes. Allow the hiring of expert analysts at the expense of the applicant to look at the odor control plans. And finally, homeowners everywhere in Greenfield need real protections. If these developers want to be successful, they, they on their own initiative, as the chairman said, should downsize the scale of this proposal dramatically and not force us to look at the possibility of special permit legal action. I submitted a thirteen-page document. I hope you all have a chance to read it. I'm appalled and horrified at this project, and we need to go back and correct the mistake we made in two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. I have Al Collins next. State your name and address, please, Al. Can't hear you.
Yes. Good evening, Al Collins. Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me. My name is Al Collins, and I live at five twenty-seven Country Club Road, directly across from the proposed three hundred thousand square foot grow of marijuana. And I am also the person that initiated this citizen petition after learning of this proposed assault on our neighborhood. In two thousand eighteen, the tier one five thousand square foot limit was put in place by the previous administration, supposedly to protect us from what the same ex-mayor is now trying to pull off by having this tier one limit removed in two thousand twenty-one. Totally unbeknownst to any of us, this was a well-timed move to bring this plan together. And by doing this, it opened up the tier, the Lyden Road tier eleven, hundred thousand square foot grow facility, along with this three hundred thousand square foot proposal on Country Club Road. Now that the agent behind this cultivation proposal has been exposed, it is up to us, the tax-paying citizens of Greenfield, and you as city councillors and board members, to try to right the wrong that was done. I do not believe that this was the intent of the city council in two thousand twenty-one to compromise their constituents. Whether it was a huge mistake or an ill-conceived plan, neither the city council nor us were privy to it, but it did in fact happen. Please heed the request of our over six hundred and thirty-seven accountant signatures of our, of citizens on our petition, petition tonight, and help us in our plight to address these concerns. Please remember, this is not a dress rehearsal, and we didn't need to do it right. And also understand that this same issue could be coming to your RC-zoned neighborhood next. This is why it is being classified as the green rush of the twenty-first century. We have a substitute for water, and we like, like we do for other fuels, and our plants and bodies require this natural resource to live. Please don't waste it. Let us save our farmland for edible crops and our natural resources such as air, water, and open spaces for future generations. And I thank you very much for listening to me. Please consider.
Thank you, Al. Susan Malli is next on my list.
Hi, this is Susan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I live on Congress Street in Greenfield, and what seems to jump out at me from all these proceedings is the backhanded, behind-the-scenes kind of maneuvering. I'm not going to repeat what everybody says about the water and all of those things and the setbacks. Those are all critically important. But we need to stop right now and pause. We need a moratorium so that all of these suggestions can be studied, codified, and put together and presented with transparency to the entire town for a vote and for their opinions. I would also ask that as soon as possible that these boards would meet in person. The, the WebEx gets a little difficult for some of us. Thank you very much.
Well, you did very well on WebEx. Thank you, Susan. I have Christine Tyler next. Can you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Christine Tyler. I live at four sixty-three Country Club Road, and I've lived in my home for fifty years. When we had our Zoom meetings in February about the proposed outside marijuana grows, little did we know at that time that the host agreement had already been signed in January two thousand twenty-two. How fair was that to the residents of Country Club Road, Plantation Circle, McCarrad Acres, Brookside, and Barton Road? People, including the mayor, said this was a done deal, and there is nothing we can do with citizens of Greenfield. There appear to be no protections in place for odor control or nuisance, so how are we supposed to be outside from July through October? Will we be held prisoners in our home for the entire summer through fall? I have been told, Mayor Roxanne has said we need to get used to the smell. Is that anywhere in the zoning laws that the residents need to suck it up? We should have been notified before any sort of host agreement was signed, as there should be some sort of regulations for outdoor pot growing to protect the residents and the environment. To put the largest outside growing mass in Greenfield, Mass. in a high residential area is disturbing. We need a moratorium to give us a chance to address these issues for large outdoor cultivations, as we have been told there are more coming to Greenfield. Do we want to be known as Skunkville, as that is a term that is already being used? One more question. Do you, as members of the council, want this in your neighborhood? We certainly know it's not going in the mayor's. I do not blame the town council, as I do not feel this was their intent, but this is a time when this needs to be addressed. Please address all our concerns before you allow this outdoor pot grow to happen. And I would like to say one other thing. I have been approached by people from other towns that go to the country club, who eat at Taras, or who bike or walk on our road, and if those pot fields go in, they will not come to this part of town, nor will they come to Greenfield. They are all disgusted. So, and one more thing. Let's remember my favorite neighbors, Officers Clarence and Donut. As they, how are they going to be able to provide comfort when they smell like skunks? Thank you so much for all that you do. I would never want your job.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate that. Michelle Delicio, name and address, please.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Michelle, are you there? Michelle Delicio.
Right here, right here. Sit over here. She's coming.
All right.
Hi, my name is Michelle Delicio. I live in Garfield Street in Greenfield, and I'm reading something that Sarah Hannan, who lives at four eighty-one Country Club Road, wrote. I'm reading this for her because she, in this note, she says why she can't be here tonight. She said, "Our property is across the street from the proposed cultivation site, a stone's throw, thirty feet away, if that. My husband and I purchased this house, our first, ten years ago. The, the appeal for this area of Greenfield was having only one direct neighbor and the great view across the street, the now-proposed largest marijuana cultivation site on the East Coast. Ten years ago, we were told that this is a working farm it could never be built on. We are raising our two sons, twelve and six-year-olds, here. They are enrolled in Greenfield schools and are active in Greenfield activities. The reason we are not here tonight is because they are both playing baseball, baseball for the Greenfield minor league. One of my children has environmental allergies that require daily medication throughout the year. The environmental conditions of this farm coming in will potentially pose a threat to the health of my children, as well as the children in the neighborhood living within close proximity. Drive down Country Club Road at any given point during the day, and you will see folks of all kinds walking, running, and biking, enjoying the fresh air. All our children love to play outside, ride their bikes, swim in our pools. Unfortunately, they won't be able to do this outside in, from June through September during the peak growing harvesting months. Chemicals and pesticides mold and compromised air quality are all factors that contribute to our concerns. I ask that the city of Greenfield and its councillors pause and push for a complete review of the environmental consequences if this goes forward. And please, think of your citizens, especially our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Counselor Disorder, I think we now have caught up to your list.
Oh, very good. I just want to comment. I see a couple of people have written in the chat. I'm seeing their names and writing them down in order of time. So next up, we're gonna have Mike Corona, followed by Sandy Kosterman and Fred MacGyver.
I have Carissa Clifford in there, but let's, let's go with your list now.
Mike Corona.
Okay, Mike, Mike Corona, you're up. State your name and address, please.
Mike Corona, Mohawk Trail. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to thank everyone, the Economic Development Board holding this joint public hearing with the planning board and, you know, the city councillors and the mayor's interests on this very important issue affecting so many people living in the immediate, in this immediate area, and also affecting at least a square mile of people living in those areas as well. Because as you know, smell does travel. I wish to support the statement made by, by Mr. Belcher time, which I think Counselor Elmer mentioned. The way I read it is that the, notwithstanding the lack of specific proposal in the, in the petition, there is no reason the city council and/or planning board cannot consider the concerns raised therein, review the existing cannabis ordinance, and propose amendments that may resolve any legitimate concerns that may exist. In my experience, this kind of review is often best begun by referral to the planning board for the initial consideration and drafting, and drafting. But the city council has authority to start the process on its own as well. So I just wanted to highlight that. And I also wanted to state that, you know, I stopped counting after five hundred and fifty signatures on, on these petitions, and I believe Al Collins mentioned there's six hundred and thirty currently. So that's a lot of people interested in this issue. And I know that there's only a hundred and thirty-five homes specifically in this area. So, you know, multiple times more than what, where people live there. But I also want to highlight, Al Norman submitted a very important informative piece of writing called Marijuana Moratorium and Margins of Protection Testimony, as well as I want to support Al Collins, who has worked tirelessly, you know, bringing awareness to this issue, and please reach out to them to learn more and how you can help on this issue if you're listening. I also, I remember when these talks started happening about marijuana grows in Massachusetts, and they were clear that if allowed, no big business would come in and dirty the waters the way California and Colorado experienced in their early years. But how do we go from a tier one of five thousand square feet to a tier eleven to a hundred thousand square feet? And multiply that by three, and there you go. You have what they're proposing in that area. Then, from staying away from residential to right in the middle of a residential community, at least a hundred and thirty-five homes, not to mention the hundreds that will be affected in the nearby area. We, the people, wish the city council and these boards to consider our grievance on this issue and remedy it to what the people wish. Everyone always says, well, why didn't you get involved? Hey, this is what getting involved looks like. How do you feel if it was across your street from one day to the next? So I, I'm really just pleading with everyone here to bring common sense, rational, logical, and practical thinking to this situation. I'm not against growing and business and, and, and development, but we need to be more realistic on, on this approach of, you know, outdoor grow, you know, not, not indoor grow, but outdoor grow of a hundred thousand square feet times three. I mean, literally making it a tier thirty-three, which doesn't even exist. So
That's your three minutes.
I'm at my three. Well, I just want to thank, I just want to thank everybody. Please consider. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sandy Kosterman is next on my list. Are we, are we on sync?
Sandy Kosterman, yes.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Sandy Kosterman, Barton Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for having this meeting tonight and allowing us to speak. Of the three proposed tier eleven cannabis outdoor growing facilities Of the three proposed tier eleven cannabis outdoor growing facilities on Country Club Road in a residential neighborhood with over a hundred and thirty-five homes and hundreds of residents are going to have a negative impact on residents' quality of life due to the smell and ugly fencing. The plants and fencing cannot be hidden by shrubs, since the slope of the land drops down from the road and will be visible by people driving by in cars, trucks, and bikes. I understand that the CCC Cannabis Control Commission said that this is not supposed to be visible. It will be visible, because even if they cover the fencing with tarps, this land slopes down from the road, such an angle where it's going to be visible. Resale value of the homes in the area will go down, and the small amount of three percent the town gains in local option sales tax is not going to compensate homeowners for lower resale values and any negative impacts on their quality of life when they can't be outside to enjoy their property and open their windows. Pittsfield, of course, outlawed this, outlawed for all future outdoor cannabis cultivation due to negative impacts on residents. There are rumors of other cannabis projects coming to Greenfield. There needs to be a moratorium on all cannabis cultivation proposals or plans in Greenfield. So this project and all projects, which affect everyone in town, can be studied and input given by residents. Also, there should be a public hearing before a house host agreement is signed. Greenfield needs to increase the setback requirements to five hundred feet per cannabis canopy from nearby home. The city council needs to rewrite the zoning laws. Do you think that large-scale pot farms in Greenfield are going to attract the kind of good businesses that will be beneficial to Greenfield? Next question, will pot farms encourage families and those with children to move to Greenfield? Next question, are pot farms what you want Greenfield to be known for? I don't, and I know these residents in the area do not want that either. These projects are not going to lower our taxes in Greenfield. Also, these projects send the wrong message to our youth in Greenfield and any businesses to move here. There needs to be a moratorium on this and future projects until it can be fully studied. This outdoor grow does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, Counselor Disorder, let's get our list together. Who do you have next?
I have, I'm gonna go over the next five if I can. Fred MacIver, Nancy MacIver, Carissa Clifford, Norm Morris, and then Garth Shanefeld.
Okay, I have a few more after that, but your list sounds good. Go ahead, start.
Go ahead.
Okay, so who was first there?
Fred MacIver.
Okay, Fred MacIver, state your name and address, you're on.
Good evening. My name is Fred MacIver. I live at Twenty Plantation Circle and have been there for thirty-five years. I'm here tonight to ask one simple question. Maybe not that simple, but the question is, why? Why are we doing this?
There you go.
Why, let me finish. Why would the city of Greenfield go against its own zoning ordinance that calls for marijuana establishments to be located where they will be consistent with the neighborhood character? This is certainly not consistent to anything in our neighborhood. Why would the city go through, go against the will of its residents and taxpayers to benefit a handful of people at the detriment of an entire neighborhood? The answer to why is as simple as the question itself. It's based on money. Greenfield needs money. Sound familiar? Greenfield needs money. Greenfield apparently needs money bad enough that we are willing to overlook the long-term effects of this, this type of enterprise for the short-term gain of money. Sad fact is that there is no magic money that can be had by the city of Greenfield. With a retail establishment, retail marijuana establishment, there is a financial gain for the city. The city receives both ten point seven five percent marijuana excise tax and a three percent marijuana local tax. From every dollar, every dollar of products sold in the stores like Patriot Care. Even sales tax, and that's just the sales tax, is collected at retailer for the Commonwealth. Cannabis cultivators are not retailers. However, they are considered wholesalers, and therefore are not required to pay any of these taxes to the city of Greenfield. In the host agreements that the mayor has already signed, the city will receive only three percent of gross sales over five hundred thousand dollars for the first year, and over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars the second, the next two years per operation. This drops to three percent, from three percent to two and a half percent when the city has two or more marijuana establishments in addition. The money is not considered revenue. The Commonwealth does not consider that revenue for the town. It is only to cover the costs of, that the city incurs that are directly related to the existence of the cannabis businesses, such as police, fire, and DPW services. So where is the money that's being talked about all over town? All this magical money that's coming to Greenfield? There is none. Let me repeat that. There is none. Property tax is paid by somebody, but that's it. Cultivators do not.
That's three minutes, Mr. MacIver, sorry.
Cultivators do not bring the funds that people are cutting on. Only retail does. Retail also brings many jobs compared to the five full-time positions that might come from a grow operation. Please consider the will of the residents and adhere to our own zoning ordinance language and its intent.
Fred, sorry, I had to cut you off, Fred. Who's next, Counselor Disorder?
Next is Nancy MacIver, followed by Carissa Clifford, and then Norm Harris. Nancy MacIver.
State your name and address. Are you there, Nancy?
You're muted, Nancy.
All right. Hi, I'm Nancy MacIver from Twenty Plantation Circle. Quickly go over as much as I can here. I've done research with the Cannabis Control Commission and on Mass GIS maps. I'm gonna quickly review current grows that exist in the state of Massachusetts. I have the names and addresses if anybody is interested. In Pittsfield, there's a tier ten grow with one home near it. In Wareham, a tier eleven with no homes. In Berry, a tier eleven with one home. In Whately, a tier ten with no homes. In Middleborough, a tier six with no homes. In Hatfield, a tier eleven with five homes. In Cheshire, a tier five with five homes. In Sheffield, a tier eleven with no homes. In Conway, a tier eleven with five homes. Uxbridge, a tier ten with no homes. There's more examples of these across the states. But in essence, there is no cannabis businesses that exist in Massachusetts with as many homes and with multiple tiers. As above, my examples, municipalities have been able to cite these businesses with their citizens in consideration, and we should be able to accomplish this as well. We have a hundred and thirty-five homes from the railroad bridge to Barton Road and thirty homes that are abutters within three hundred feet. I'd also like to review the zoning changes that got us to where we are now. Everybody knows in twenty eighteen, there was a tier one designation. On October, on November nineteenth in twenty twenty, there was a similar public hearing of the Planning Board and the EDC, which, as we had tonight, to accommodate higher-yield consulting, that wanted to create a tier eleven at thirteen eighty-five Berniston Road at indoor action. That was under Mayor Martin's administration. That was just a presentation. And then fast forward to March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, when the tier one was removed. Of note, during those deliberations, Councillor Tim Dolan was quoted in the minutes of this meeting that he had a concern that business should not be dictating how the zoning amendments for marijuana cultivation and retail are performed by the city. The change, these changes were made to accommodate two marijuana grows, and after that change, this current project was hatched. This zoning changes, zoning changes need to be done for the, not just for businesses, but for homeowners to handle quality of life issues, visual and economic issues. And we need equity in zoning to accommodate our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Counselor Disorder.
Carissa Clifford, please.
State your name and address, please, Clarissa.
Good evening, my name is Clarissa Clifford, and I live at three ninety Mohawk Trail. I'm not even sure, before I even start, my comments are just very general and concern both bike lanes and the pot farm. Is that okay for this forum?
Clarissa, I know the Pike Lanes was on the agenda, but we're not gonna get to it tonight. I can tell you that. So why don't you limit your comments to the pot farm, and we'll catch up with you later on that.
My comments are just very general, so it won't be what you've heard already. But, so, we have a big problem in Greenfield. Things have been changing rapidly, and most of it has not been for the better. People are clearly unhappy with the way things are being run. Most are motivated to take action because of specific issues that are or will be affecting them, like the pot farm monstrosity tonight that we're discussing. I'm a nurse. In my profession, it's clear that you can treat a patient's symptoms all day long, but unless you address the underlying condition, the patient will continue to suffer. That's what's happening in Greenfield. We can keep trying to put Band-Aids on these issues, but it's not doing us any good. I've done a thorough head-to-toe assessment, and I have diagnosed Greenfield as being consumed by a bureaucratic cancer fed by greed. We as a community have trusted you to do what's right for Greenfield. Some of you are doing an amazing job and are clearly doing your due diligence and putting forth a tremendous amount of time and energy and effort into what's best for us, your constituents. Some of you seem more apathetic, just wanting to go with the flow and not make any waves. And then there are some who are hell-bent on a certain agenda with no apparent insight or concern that the plan is driving the city into the ground. I've noticed a certain MO that's being used, and whether it's the pot farm or the bike lanes or any other plan brought forth by the city's master plan. Bring as little attention as possible, obtain the money or promise of money, and then open it up to the public to appear that we have real input, which we don't. Please prove me wrong, your actions have implicated you. The city entered into agreements with developers of the pot farm before people in the neighborhoods were even aware of the possibility that something like this was being proposed. And I won't go on to continue with the bike lanes, but the whole point is that, I believe, maybe Sandy or someone had mentioned, we need a heads-up before. There's a certain point where the, the deal is already done, and we're sitting here making comments, "Please, please, please," and begging. And, and it's, I'm really realizing that, that the public actually really has no, no power. And we're looking to you, please, to find a better way that our voices can be heard before the deal is already done. And that was my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Clarissa. Counselor Disorder.
Norm Harris.
Norm Morris?
Norm Morris.
Yeah.
Am I heard now?
Yep.
Okay, I need my granddaughter to navigate me through this, but here it goes. Norman Morris, seven forty-one Country Club Road. My belief is the intent of the community outreach requirements defined by the CCC was not met. First of all, these are three separate projects, so there should have been three separate meetings instead of cramming this into one evening. In fact, Attorney Mensing commented that maybe this should have been done on separate nights. He was correct. This would have given a butter's time to digest and research information. Actually, many of the abutters thought it was a mistake that they had received three separate notifications. Secondly, three residential abutters did not receive a notification. I also questioned if the Country Club of Greenfield is not in a butter. Looking at the town map, they have land which abuts this property. I would think they would have interest in odor mitigation, since they have outdoor seating at their restaurant. Finally, the presentations were flawed with lack of or misinformation. In the security part of the first meeting, cameras were discussed at length. And then the comment was made, of course, there will be a security fence. Obviously, abutters wanted information regarding the fence and visual impact in this area. Follow-up questions regarding how well it looked and how far from the road were not answered. There were questions regarding property values. Attorney Mensing referred to studies suggesting no change in property values and possibly a slight uptick. He indicated that he would follow up with that information, but it didn't happen. He did not follow up on a question regarding land preservation. Inappropriate comments were made, like, technically, this is not agricultural, obviously implying that it should be. One of the owners stated, "This will not have an industrial look." I don't know what planet he lives on. It was stated that in short period of time, plantings of trees, shrubs, and other greenery would negate the negative visual aspect of the fence. Such plantings concealed the fence, concealing the fence is disallowed by the CCC for obvious reasons. Some of these statements might have been questioned by the moderator, but the moderator was an attorney with this law firm. This is legal. However, the CCC suggests a neutral facilitator to act as a moderator. These are biased, not objective presentations. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Norm. Counselor Disorder.
Next, we have Garth Shanefeld.
Garth, can you state your name and address? You may be muted. Garth? Let's move on, we'll give him another chance.
Okay, and we will get back to you, Garth. Lisa Appleton is next.
Hi, I'm Lisa Appleton at three sixty-five Barton Road.
Could you speak up a little bit, or turn your volume up, or get closer or something?
Is this better?
A little.
I'm for how to do the volume, hang on. I'll just get closer. Is that any better?
Yes.
All right, fine.
Much better.
No, my name is Lisa Appleton. I live at three sixty-five Barton Road. Not a direct abutter, but not very, very far from the proposed grow site. I'm a nurse practitioner, and I work in Greenfield. So I'm concerned with potential adverse health impacts of living near a large outdoor cannabis grow facility. And there are a number of issues, and I will be brief. There are high concentrations of bacteria and fungi from the cultivation process that can cause respiratory issues, nasal congestion, and eye, skin, and throat irritation. The direct abutters will suffer the most. The process of cultivation will increase mold spores in the air, and that can cause wheezing, coughing, trouble breathing, respiratory infections, and exacerbation of asthma and related conditions. Direct contact with the plants can cause itchy skin, hives, and swollen irritated eyes. And people who are allergic or hypersensitive can develop Wirth reactions with repeated exposures. Marijuana cultivation also produces ozone from the chemical reaction of nitrogen oxides and volatile organic compounds such as terpenes from the marijuana plants. Facilities that grow marijuana commonly use insecticides and fungicides, some of which pose certain skin and respiratory hazards as well. The abutters to the area under consideration on Country Club Road are potentially at risk for some or all of these adverse health effects. It's a windy area, so toxins from the grow facilities will not necessarily stay where they originated or where they were applied, nor will the skunk odor, which will be quite significant, given the size of the proposed facilities. This will detract from abutters' enjoyment of their own properties, as well as lower their property values. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Counselor Disorder.
Next, we have. Next we have Barbara Morris. Barbara.
If you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Barbara Morris. I live at seven forty-one Country Club Road. I'm deeply concerned about this project for several reasons. The first is that unlike many of the cities and towns around us, Greenfield has few regulations regarding very basic considerations of any cannabis growing project. In not doing so, we have essentially put the cart before the horse. Specific and detailed regulations regarding setback, proximity to wetlands, consideration of water usage, and most importantly, proximity to neighboring residences should have been developed, approved and circulated before ever considering any cultivation proposal. So I also want to address some of the comments that I've seen be made on, in social media that in being opposed to this project, that we are somehow anti-farming. And actually, it's the exact opposite. I and I bet others who are in tonight on this call equate the smell from fertilizing the fields with spring. We're so fortunate to be able to buy fresh eggs, meats and produce direct from our neighbors who farm. Those of us who care enough to be here tonight are pro-farming. But this isn't farming. Let's not kid ourselves. It's a commercial venture with no consideration for the abutting, thickly settled neighborhood.
They're here.
That said, this location is totally inappropriate for even a tier one project. During the community outreach session, which occurred one night in three parts, it was said five separate times that there would be quote additional opportunities to express concerns, clearly leading those attending to believe that this was just the beginning of a dialogue. Yet here we are three months later and no additional meetings, either online or in person, have been scheduled with them. And finally, the smell. While indoor cultivation project can take steps to mitigate but not eliminate the odor, outdoor grows cannot. Companion plantings will not be able to mask the odor and the smell will travel beyond the immediate area with the slightest breeze. I respectfully urge the committees involved to place a moratorium on all special permits for cannabis cultivation and to further enable study and consideration of this in any other cannabis project and that zoning changes be initiated to protect our neighborhood and others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barb. Council Disorder.
Brian Hoffman.
Hello, I'm sorry my video doesn't work. Is my microphone working?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Brian Hoffman. I live at three forty-five Barton Road. I am Lisa Appleton's neighbor, just one uh, lot closer to Country Club Road. I'm an orthopedic surgeon. I have been living in the valley for, for fourteen years. I've been living here on Barton Road, which I love and hope to continue to love for the last three. Uh, I'm not going to speak to security measures that's been done, but I do want to point out that no farmer I know of is installing an eight foot high fence with razor wire. So we can't really authentically compare a pot growing enterprise to a corn growing enterprise. I'm talking about, uh, property value here. And I just want to point out that people who say that the value may go up are probably blurring the lines between data regarding dispensaries where the value does go up to data around farms where that is not clear. So anyone who says they know what happens to property values, be clear about that point. This may have been farmland in the past, but regardless of the technicality right now of its dual zoning status, it's essentially a residential neighborhood. I certainly would have paused before bidding on this property, as lovely as it is, if the real estate agent had told me that I would smell like weed several months out of the year. Okay, these people will help, will these people who are growing the farm help me script a forced premature conversation with my daughter when she asks me what that funny smell is? Even if some folks dislike the disorder, the odor of manure more than marijuana, manure isn't controversial when it comes to raising kids who like to play outside or hosting grandchildren. Right? Imagine if you bought a car and you really wanted this car and were happy with it for years. And just as you listed it for sale, somebody snuck inside and spo- and poured skunk spray all over the floor mats. That's what's going to happen to our lots nearby, just as you're listing it for sale. This is not different in principle, just in magnitude. I want to enter a couple of examples into the record. In the two thousand and eight survey by the National Association of Realtors, it was found that twelve to fourteen percent of Realtors found a decrease in property values for properties proximate to a marijuana growing enterprise. In two thousand and sixteen, a resident adjacent to a Washington marijuana farm was unable to keep his windows open and the Spokane, Washington county assessor reduced his property value by ten percent. The county commission subsequently banned new outdoor farming by unanimous vote. In two thousand and eighteen, according to a New York Times article, residents in Sonoma County, north of San Francisco, sued to ban cannabis operations from their neighborhoods. In Mendocino County, just farther north, recently created zones banning cannabis cultivation were set in place. The sheriff's deputy there reports that the stench is the number one complaint. Immediate neighbors wear respirators and can't tolerate being outside for more than thirty minutes. Three minutes. High school students have complained of headaches and the high school has been warned visiting sports teams that they might encounter the smell of pot.
Brian.
Yeah.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
There's a lot more I can submit references on request.
Thank you. Council Disorder.
William Johnston.
Good evening, board. Thank you, guys. Hey, uh, thanks for listening to me. Um, as a resident and business owner here in Greenfield.
Name and address.
It's, uh, William Johnston, thirty-seven Verde Drive. Um, I moved, I moved to this town fifteen years ago, um, with my high school sweetheart. We, my family was able to develop the McCord Acres parcel. At this point, I've watched our neighborhoods grow, um, to a great place where children are riding bicycles and enjoying outside. Um, I've met with the gov-, uh, with our current mayor. Um, I have requested a meeting with her and was also joined by her assistant and the, uh, the attorney, the town attorney, which I thought was odd at the time. Um, these conversations have gone on way before the HCA, uh, meetings were held. Like you said, each HCA meeting, uh, was given, the first two were given a half hour, which I raised my hand and had questions and was not called upon. Um, the time ran out, so I feel like the HCA meetings were kind of uh, not to the level they should have been held, uh, with the questions of suite A, suite B, suite C. So the three definitely questioned me, or I have questions for. Another questioning I have is fi-, uh, you know, i- if this was indoors and could be remediated, um, I don't have a problem with cannabis. Uh, I actually have farmer friends who've used this, this parcel. Getting three five thousand square foot buildings on it. Um, I would like to know how we're going to do septic systems, um, you know, with this development that we made here. I have one acre of, of property and it's about eighty thousand dollars. That's not my house. That's two hundred feet by two hundred feet. I get taxed on eighty thousand dollars. There's no kind, there's nowhere near that amount of revenue coming from that parcel, even if this is successful. I mean, it's a hundred and four acres. Um, the AMR, I have questions about, I mean, the deed has APR restrictions on it and it feels like the APR, uh, the AMR, which was passed through, um, was a subdivision, which was a change of a deed. Um, I, I don't know. It's between a business owner and a, a parcel. The other thing is, you know, I'm now, the smell coming from the east of me, or excuse me, from the west on Lyden Road. Um, we are now having one from the south. And I hear the potential of one going in on Seventh Street, which is to the, um, so the people in this meeting don't know of, but to the, to the east of us. I'm going to be surrounded three ways of my quality of life is going to go down as and my property value will not increase in this whole subdivision, which creates a lot of revenue. We'll have kids not riding bikes due to sell smell of skunk, et cetera. So it's just a quality of life problem that I have. If this didn't smell, um, if it was inside of a building, I understand that buildings are ugly, but they don't smell if it was indoor. I'm sorry that, we should have a moratorium. We should do more research, water. There's so many impacts, you know.
Mr. Johnson, three minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
And next, next we have Ruthie Sund McDonald, please.
Are you there, Ruthie?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Name and address, please.
Oh, great. Yeah. My name is Ruthie McDonald. I live on one twenty-eight Barton Road in Greenfield. Uh, we purchased our home to here ten years ago and we bought it with the intention of it being our forever home. One of the reasons we chose to live in North Greenfield was because of its remote location and natural surroundings. We live in a really beautiful area and I'd love to keep it that way since it is what drew us to this part town in the first place. I'm a supporter of innovative and smart ways of developing growth opportunities for Greenfield. I'm an advocate for taking calculated risks. The bigger the risk, the bigger reward, right? However, there are some decisions I feel require more careful consideration around the long-term effects on our community. These decisions require, require thorough and strategic planning. Marijuana is a growing industry. There's no doubt about that. I'm not anti-marijuana and I understand the appeal of bringing in facilities like this. I own to also understand how important it is to support our local farmers. With the Lyden Road facility and the proposed Country Club Road one will be flanked on either side. There are also additional farms in this area. Will those be future sites as well? What I want us to carefully consider is do the benefits outweigh the risks? Let's make sure the return on this investment is truly worth it. What good is bringing in money to the town if we lose our neighborhoods in the meantime? Opening up Greenfield to cultivation facilities isn't necessarily a bad thing, though we don't know all the, the downsides just yet. But not identifying parameters to protect our residents is. Let's think thoroughly about the impact this has, especially in such a populated area. Please, I'm asking you to pause, think beyond today and the immediate return. Look ahead to the long-term effects on our local community, our environment and our neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Annie.
Um, I comment and then I'll say who's next. Um, we, please don't comment in the chat. We will go over that. And I want you to know we will get to the call-in users too, after we finish the, those that are online. Um, so next we have Kathy Gouch, please.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Name and address, please.
My name is Kathy Gouch. I live at twelve Brookside Avenue. And I abut McCord Acres. And the one thing that I would like to bring up is through my experience, when McCord Acres was going in, Eric Turog and Roxanne Weetagarden were not supportive of the abutters. They were not supportive of the residential property owners. In fact, when the developer violated some of the building, uh, restrictions, they protected him from the residents. So my concern is Eric Turog and our mayor. Because no matter what we might want to do, they are going to do their little backdoor deals. And, and I am only speaking from experience. Thank you for listening.
Whoa. All right now.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please let us not comment. If you have something to say, put your name in the chat and follow the rules like everybody else is. Council Disorder.
Next we have, uh, Annie Hassett.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can?
Yes.
So Annie Hassett, twenty-one Leonard Street, Greenfield, Mass. All right.
Go ahead, Annie.
Okay, thank you so much. So, uh, songs staging children come aging children I am one. Joni Mitchell. Uh, I noticed most of the people speaking that I can see are all elders in our community. We're speaking to the issue, not about cannabis. What, you know, we're all speaking about pot. So I grew up as a hippie, a generation of Peter, Paul and Mary, the Beatles. We all moved as a generation. We smoked. We kind of looked after each other. It wasn't a thing of profit at the time. Some were making profit, but it, it wasn't everybody. So, uh, that property, our city of dreams that we have and that we, I've lived in here for forty-five years. People from the outside look in and they say, hey, there is a place where we can use this for profit. It's pro- pot, profit over people. And with my understanding, somebody who's the owner of that property is getting seventy thousand dollars a year to have that stay as farmland. And to me, farmland is not potland. It's very close to that river. And I was talking to somebody that used to live here saying that the amount of, of, uh, uh, chemicals that are used to grow pot are not regulated like farmland things are, they have a different kind of, forgive me if I don't know, ordinance. So I think about Hadley and growing tobacco and what's happened to the land there. And, uh, I, I grow, I, I grow at the poor people's farm in Lyden. I'm, I'm really worried about what's going to happen with the water right next to that sweet little river as those chemicals go in there. That road is a tiny little road. And, uh, I can't imagine the traffic and who's making the money? Who is making the money over our community and our lives? And our children, what kind of, what kind of, uh, uh, what, what are we saying to our youth and our community that I grew up at a time, if you had a bud, a tiny little bud or a little spliff that they called it, I've been sober twenty-five years, but they called it something like that. Uh, you were, uh, thrown in jail for that and then, uh, a felon. And so now all of a sudden the rules have changed and hey, let's make money. It's, uh, we got to really think of the community that we love and what's going to happen to that property.
Three minutes, Ms. Hassett. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much for letting me speak. I, I love all you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Annie. Council Disorder.
So I, I'd just like to say, I may have made an error. There was two Ruthies. It was a Ruthie and a Ruth. Um, it looks like Ruth is going to pass on speaking and I'm sorry for, if I made an error there. Um, but I'm going to circle back to Garth Shanefeld. Is Garth available and have a mi- open mic?
Are you there, Garth? Okay. Is there anybody else on your list? Council Disorder.
No, but we do have several call-in users, Councilor Elmer. So what we've done in the past was just tell any call-in user who wishes to speak to unmute themselves and give their name. Is that amenable to you?
That sounds like a plan.
Okay. So any call-in user who wishes to speak, just unmute yourself, state your name. We will get to everyone. We promise.
I'm not hearing any.
Okay. I'm not seeing any more names.
Is there anybody who wanted to speak and didn't get a chance?
Here's a person. Here's a, here's an individual. Go, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Jen Stiles. I live at twenty-nine Verde. So I do have a question for you in regards.
We've lost her. I've lost her.
Jen.
Can you hear her?
Jen, can you try that again? Okay.
She could try again. I see a Lindsay has popped up.
Very good.
Hi. Hello, my name is Lindsay Sciano and I live on one oh seven Verde Drive. Um, I have lived in Greenfield my whole life. I used to live, um, I recently just purchased this house in Greenfield about a little over a year and a half ago. Um, we loved being away, we used to live, um, over by GCC, so we loved having a little bit more land and um, there was way more children in that area. I have two children myself, um, who one attends high school. Who one attends high school and one attends the middle school here in town. And I mean, my, my boys are outside all day. They, they are riding bikes with all of the kids. In this neighborhood, they ride their bikes up and down Country Club Road. They golf at the Country Club of Greenfield. And when I explained to them what was happening in the field that we drive by. Two times a day, more than two times a day. They were like, well, people live here. Why would that be put in the middle of a place where, you know, people live and children live and, you know, there's children younger than them? And I, I said, I, I don't know. None of us were told about that. And had I known. When I bought my house in two thousand twenty, that this was going to be put in there, there's no way. I would have, I would have purchased my house. I love my house. I love my house and, but I'm not, you know, it just makes me really sad that. You know, my children won't be able to enjoy their childhood because. That, you know, that there's going to be a metal fence and possibly. You know, I, I, I heard that there may be people with, with. I don't, I don't know what the word, I don't want to say the G U N. I'm going to spell it. G, G U N's are like protective gear, tasers or some sort. I don't know if that's. That's a rumor that's going around. My children ride their bikes up and down and I don't know. I'm just, I'm very disappointed. That Greenfield has chosen to do this and that people in the vicinity of. Of, of this area were not given more information about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth would, Ruth would like to speak?
Yeah, thank you. Just real quick.
Name and address, please.
Sorry, my name's Ruth Gemperline. I'm at seven five three Country Club Road. I was at that midnight meeting. I, you know, I'm just basically very angry and I'm not, I mean, I'm down a little further, but I'm, I feel for the people and I feel for the town is completely. Completely going in the wrong direction. I don't know if you've been watching Facebook, but they're calling us Greenfield, green for all the wrong reasons. But I just feel like we're under attack and this needs to be addressed and we need to step back and take a good look at this. But we are under attack. This town is under attack by cultivation. And if this one, there's how many? Seventy? Somebody told me, proposals? That's ridiculous, ridiculous. We need to get this under control and we need protection. And that's so vitally important. I just feel like we are totally under attack. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. I think it's seventeen, not seventy, but go ahead, Counselor Disorder.
Seventeen.
I have no more people's names in the chat, but I want to reach out to, yes, there's a call-in person.
So this is Jen Styles back again. I, I heard that I wasn't heard the whole time. So I live at twenty-nine Verde Drive. And my question is, have you been informed who the other tenants are? Because in February, we were only told of one of the renters that, you know, the other ones have not been disclosed. But today you said they're all friends. And then if you've been informed, we'd like to know. I would like to know. And then others with that. Do they have any relation to any of the members who are working towards this to get a pass? That's my next question, so.
Was that trouble Mendison?
Yeah, I just.
I'm sorry.
Can I make just a brief comment? First of all, I've been a pot smoker for fifty years, so I want to say there are many of us who are totally in support of cannabis. It's legal, yahoo, let's just get it passed federally. I live at, by the way, twelve Brookside. I do not want this operation. I do not believe that it should be in neighborhoods. I'm totally aghast and as my wife commented earlier. We did have problems with the planning board who kept siding with the developer in spite of, you know, bad behavior. And this just smells of that same kind of plot. But, you know, I just, I, you know, nobody has spoken in support of cannabis. I'm fully in support of it. But I too feel it has to be done in a responsible way and doing it across the street. And I'm just on the other side of McCord Acres, so I would definitely feel the effects as well. And this is just, has been done in such a poor way. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trouble.
Rick, Rick would like to speak?
Yeah, a quick comment. Rick Gamel, six thirty-seven Lyden Road. So I'm in the. I'm just a sliver away from being an abutter on the, the west side. And I guess I'm on the south side of fifty, so I got the opposite than Annie Hassett. But, you know, I, I think we need your help. Bottom line, you know, I, I was undecided. I've been listening to this, listening to my neighbors, you know, and I think we need your help. You guys all signed up to, to serve the town and I wonder if this was your vision for when you signed up, right? Is this what you're looking for? And, and I would just say this, there's a time and a place for everything. Maybe now is a time for marijuana. It does have a lot of medicinal purposes. I'm not here to debate that. But the place part is, is sticking out to me. We have an industrial park. Stick it over there. This is not a farm. You know, as, you know, Dr. Hoffman stated, you know, farms don't have fences. They don't have razor fences. I have a farm. I have a small farm. You can come over here and see my animals and it's a joy. You can, you happily bring your children, your grandchildren. You wouldn't do that here. That is an industrial, for-profit organization. That should be an industrial park. It should not be in a residential area. So again, you got a hard job. I wouldn't want it. But there, again, just think about a time and a place. And this may be the, the time for marijuana, but it's certainly not the place. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else?
Anyone else on the phone? Is there anybody else on the phone that wants to speak? Just unmute. Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
If I may. Two things. There was a question in the chat. And I, I just want to bring that out publicly. Someone asked about meeting minutes. Meeting minutes, yes, will be available. They, they. What happens with meeting minutes is they have to be typed in and then they are not actually passed. Until the next meeting, at which point they become public. So, and that's because the board has to agree that they, that that was actually, we have to all vote to agree that that's what. A, a true statement. So it would be a month before that would happen. And if anyone wants, may I, may I just continue with one other thought? If anybody had anything that they wanted to write to city council. They can certainly put that, put it in writing if you had any, anything else to say.
Thank you, Counselor Disorder. If there are no more people who want to speak, I'm going to close this public hearing for the planning. For the EDC one fifty-three. Charles, you want to do something similar for the planning board?
Here, I'll close this planning board.
My name's Rick. Oh, could I still make a comment?
Uh, yeah, let's, we'll reopen it. We'll close it after you're done. Go ahead, Rick.
I, I live at seven oh one Country Road. And I'm not going to repeat anything else that anybody else has said. About a year and a half ago, I retired and a term of employment. Was I was subjected to random drug tests and I would be dismissed for a positive result. I find it very ironic, the irony of being able to walk down the road I live on. With a facility that produces something that would cost me my employment. And I just thought I would make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I, I will now close the public hearing officially at one fifty-five. Charles? Sorry, what did I say? It's, it's been an hour and fifty-five minutes. The time is seven thirty-one. And I'll close the hearing now. Sorry for the confusion.
I'll close the planning board hearing at seven thirty-one. I do want to note that Natty Hussey was here to attend at our meeting. I missed him on the roll call, but he's been here. All this time. Take that for the record.
I also have that marked down, Charles.
Thanks, Emily.
All right. Well, we've been given a lot to think about. And I know that we will be taking this up in the EDC and I know the planning board is likely to too. I suspect there will be a moratorium and new regulations that will govern. Further grows in, in Greenfield. This, this proposal that, that triggered the moratorium. Next goes to the zoning board of appeals. And there's another, as I say, you know, the, the growers have, haven't been great neighbors. And they'll have another chance to hear from you. And the zoning board of appeals may very well take some of your suggestions to heart. And I don't, I can't speak for them. I don't know what they'll do, but they would. They should hear from you too. It, it, I, I, it's been a long meeting. I'm not sure it makes sense for us to talk about this much now. As I say, we're not going to get to the parking on Main Street. So I'm inclined to, to hear if there's any new business anybody wants to bring forward, any of the counselors. If, if there's a counselor who wants to speak, I don't want to shut you off. Go ahead, Counselor Disorder.
Although people still on the line, there was some, and I'm going to ask this. Everybody's information was fabulous. There were two people that spoke about the meet, the minutes, the, the meeting that happened. And I'm actually going to put a shout out, but I hope that they will put that in writing and send it to city council. Is that Mr. Norm Morris and Mr. William Johnston. Everyone spoke fabulously, but that for me was new information about the actual meetings that happened. So that's just a request on my part. I'm not speaking for the group, that you might send that to city council.
There, I, I have seen, if I could speak, there are videos of those three meetings. That have been circulating. And I will say for, for whoever asked about the minutes of this meeting, this meeting has been recorded. And I believe it will end up on Greensfield, the GCTV. So if you didn't, if you, if you liked it the first time, you'll like it even more the second. Any other counselors or planning board members who would like to speak? I think I saw a planning board member.
Was there anybody from, from our board that wanted to share a comment or thought? No, I'll, I'll, I'll just say for, you know, there's been really, it's been really helpful hearing this public input. We've had lots of, lots of ideas brought forward and I'm sure we'll be considering a lot of what we've heard this evening. And keep your eyes open for, on the, the calendar for our agenda. And when items that we'll be discussing, when these issues come up, feel free to, to join that, to join our meetings. I'm hoping we're going to be having in-person meetings in the next month or so.
Okay, is there any new business? Is there any old business someone wants to bring up? I will say that the next meeting of the Economic Development Committee will be June fourteenth at six P M. In the City Hall Meeting Room, I believe, on the second floor, fourteen Court Square. They're, they're set up for, what's it called? I'm blanking now. Where, where you can. Where you can.
Hybrid, hybrid meetings.
Yes, that. Chuck, you want to say about your next meeting?
Well, our, our next meeting is, is Thursday next week. There's not a set, there's not a set agenda yet. I've got to speak with Eric about what's going to be on the agenda, but I have a feeling that. Some of what we, we heard tonight is going to be talked about, so.
Okay, for the record, I saw ninety-five people in the, in the chat at one point, which is a personal record for me. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Disorder.
Do I have a second? All in favor on the, on the EDC?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we'll close the EDC meeting at seven thirty-seven.
And do I have a motion to close the planning board meeting?
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matt, aye. Matt, was that you for seconding?
Yes, that was me.
Thank you.
Okay. We're closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you guys next week.
See you next week.
I'll stick around until everybody leaves and then I'll shut the recording off.